Yeah, where's what you post now?
Yes. Yes. No. David. David. Great.
Hey, Greg.
Hey, it's on, bud.
You. Really liking these blurry backgrounds, you know, it's very forgiving.
Yeah, you're crystal clear and the background's blurry.
Yeah, it's great. You can put anything you want back there. Golf clubs, you know.
Good evening, counselor.
I'll let you both know that I purposely do not have a blurry background because I want you to know that I have absolutely nothing going on.
Well, are you in your, are you, you're not in your office, are you?
Steve, I can't tell you where I am.
Right, exactly. Underground bunker somewhere.
Exactly.
You told me you'd have to go me, right?
He's a speakeasy somewhere.
Yeah. That's why I keep having to mute myself.
That's right.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, Ashley, how are you?
Hey. Soon we're gonna have to come out of hibernation in 2023.
That's right. It's gonna be a big change for everyone. I'm not gonna be comfortable meeting people in person.
You'll be fine.
Hey, everybody.
Joe's back.
I'm over three times.
Yeah, I saw him there for a while and then he just disappeared. Hey, Amy, how are you?
How you doing?
There.
Well, how's everyone?
Super duper. Joe and Jody, if you can turn your cameras on, we'll get the ball rolling here. Good evening, Jody.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Chandra in or out? I can't remember.
What's that?
Is Chandra in or out? I can't remember.
He was not at the last meeting, but I, I, um, I don't recall hearing anything about this meeting.
Neither did I, but let me just.
Jessica usually is on the little.
Can you hear me?
Crystal clear.
We just can't see you, Joe.
We hear you. There you go.
There I am.
All right, I guess we'll get rolling and then if I'll ping them both. And then we get them in through the moralizations.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by post on the board of Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspaper, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, September 5th, seven o'clock via Zoom webinar.
There she is. Jessica's there. Sorry for interrupting.
Amy Lawrence.
Here.
Jody Sharma.
Here.
Joseph Steinberg.
Here.
Steve Togar.
Here.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Here.
Ashley Abingdon.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Glad.
Here.
Chairman Craig Plitner.
Here. Okay, um, we'll get started this evening with our approval of minutes. Um, we have one set, um, to approve of October 17th. Any corrections or changes to those minutes? If not, who is eligible to? Vote.
Joe Steinberg, Steve Togar, Wolfgang, Ashley, Jessica, Craig.
Okay, so out of those, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of 10:17?
Move approval.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next up, we have the moralizations. Um, we're starting with calendar 389122 Rajesh uh, Yurasi 76 Linden Street in Milburn. Who do we have eligible on that?
Eligible, um, Amy, Jody, Joe, Steve, Shondro, Jessica, Craig.
Sounds like a full crowd. Uh, any corrections or changes to that moralization? If not, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Craig Plitner.
Yes. Next, calendar 389322 Z Edward and Pamela Rubin at 45 Deer Path in Short Hills. Any corrections or changes to that moralization? If not, can I have a motion on that?
Move approval.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Craig Plitner.
Yes. Next, we have calendar 389422 Z Abbasi and V Mirokny, Mirokny, 18 South Bee, Beechcroft Road in Short Hills. Any corrections or changes? If not, a motion, please. Who's eligible?
Um, eligible are Amy, Jody, Joe, Steve, Jessica, Craig.
Okay. Amy, you got a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll move approval.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Jody, thank you.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Craig Plitner.
Yes. And lastly, we have calendar 389622 Annette Romano, 40 North Road in Roma, sorry, Annette Roma's 40 North Road in Short Hills.
Same people are eligible.
Okay, so motion, if there's any corrections or changes, otherwise a motion on that.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. A second?
Again.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, Jessica.
Oh, Jessica, I'm sorry. I didn't have attention there.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Craig Plitner.
Yes. Uh, I can bring Chandra over.
See here? Oh, perfect, okay. Where you go? Did you bring him over?
I brought him over. Sorry, I grabbed him.
Um, so I'll just mark him down here. Seven oh six.
There he is.
My good evening.
Good evening, Chandra. Um, our first application this evening is a continuated matter from October 10th, 2022. Calendar 389222, um, Lido and Miriam Sotowski, 356 Hartsway Drive, Short Hills. Over, there we go.
Just for, um, to let everyone know, they initially provided testimony on October 17th. Amy, Jody, and Sean Drew were not there. So Amy and Jody have watched the YouTube video, they would be able to vote. If not, Ashley will vote. Um, and we'll have just six.
Yeah, I, I, I did not watch the video.
I did not watch the video.
So Ashley will vote, um, and Sean, um, Sean Drew, you were not here either. I don't know if you watched the meeting.
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay, so it'll just be six. Um, Ashley will vote.
Very good. Uh, both of you are still under oath from our previous meeting. Um, Danny, you've been qualified as an architect on this project, so, uh, what we'd like to continue, please do.
Good.
Uh, if I may, um, Gito Subotowski, um, let me know if you need me to spell my name for the record again?
You're okay.
No, oh, okay. Uh, thank you, members of the board for having us, uh, this evening. My name is Gito Subotowski, uh, the homeowner at 356 Hartsway Drive in Short Hills. Uh, as you're aware, uh, we filed an application for, uh, a variance, uh, to construct a, uh, pool house, if you will, in the, in the rear yard. So thank you for your comments from, uh, from our last meeting. Um, we've been able to take a look at the, at the plan and your comments have allowed us to really, you know, to focus on, well, the need versus, the need versus the want on the, uh, on the application. Um, you know, while the original structure that we proposed, uh, one could argue was, um, nice, we understand it was too, it was too large a deviation, if you will, um, with respect to the level of variances that, uh, we were seeking. The, you know, the need was driven primarily by two things. Uh, number one was access to a bathroom, which we do not have, uh, at least directly from the house without running through a, either a family room or a couple of rooms to access, and the other one, uh, being storage, which we don't have, uh, fortunately access to on our, uh, first floor. Um, so we, you know, we did go ahead and revise the plan to reduce the structure. Uh, we think at least significantly to reduce, um, many of the functional areas, particularly the, the bar area, the outdoor space, the outdoor, uh, covered area. Um, we should note that the, the space is, um, reduced to, uh, and I'll let Annie, uh, Danny speak to, to this more in detail, but was reduced to a level where uh, one of the variances that we seek, uh, actually would no longer be necessary and the deviation with respect to lock coverage and building coverage, uh, is much smaller. And again, I'll let Danny speak to the deal, the details, but I believe was closer in the 3% range to the 10% range. Um, so, you know, we think we've been able to, uh, make some improvements there and focus again, uh, more so on, uh, functionality and the things that, uh, we feel are important. And again, more of a, more of a need than a, a want. I should note that, uh, you know, we've been able to discuss further again with our neighbors and those that it might impact. And we've noted that, uh, any structure we might construct is uh, at least 150 feet, 150 feet away from any home or, you know, again, remains, uh, invisible. Uh, and our neighbors have reiterated that there's, uh, nothing that we would construct that would be something that is concerning or upsetting or that they would, uh, again, not, uh, not be okay with. But again, you know, we, we've made an effort with the comments of, of the board that we thought were very helpful in allowing us to redesign in a way that we thought would have, uh, you know, less or very little impact whatsoever, uh, on the structure that we construct. With that, I'll let, uh, Danny get, uh, get into the weeds a little bit of some of the more technicalities that I know that the board is interested in.
Thank you. So I'd like to, uh, share the screen and go over some of the changes we made, uh, to the scope of the project. And let me share the screen. Okay. So again.
So, so Dan, before you start.
Thank you.
So are we looking at plans that have been submitted at least 10 days prior to the hearing?
We are.
Okay.
And in addition, thank you, Rob, but I'd like to mark this as an exhibit. I believe we're up to A4.
Right, okay. So that the reason why, just so we're clear, we're marking this as A4 is because you have some yellow highlighted portions of maybe the zoning table?
I, I did, and I had the opportunity to do a revise, three dimensional view of our revisions, so that's included. And I'd like to reintroduce the, some of the photographs I had introduced before. So this is exhibit A4, and it's three slides, architectural drawings, uh, three dimensional rendering, and photographs of the, of the site as exists today.
You're all.
Okay, yeah, please proceed.
Okay, good.
Yeah, good. Um, so basically previously we were seeking three variances. Uh, one was for accessory use coverage, which we've eliminated. And we've greatly reduced the lot coverage ask and, and we've reduced the building coverage ask. And how we did that was previously we were requesting, um, a structure that was about 83 square feet larger. So we reduced it 83 square feet, the, the pool house. So now we're at 370 is, is, is the overage on building coverage. And we eliminated, we had a fairly large patio to the side. And we had a walkway alongside the pool, so we've eliminated that. So we were able to reduce the lot coverage. I'll run through the numbers. It's this lot coverage by 751 square feet. So we're, we're currently over, uh, lot coverage by 434 square feet, which is equates to about a 4.1% deviation from, from allowed. And previously we're 11.3. So that's where I think we made our greatest strides in.
Is, is that, is that lot coverage or building coverage?
That was lot coverage. So the numbers on the lot coverage now would be 36.4% proposed, whereas 35% is the max allowed. And so it's a 1.4% over what's allowed or a 4.1% deviation from what's allowed. So that's where we made our biggest stride was within the lot coverage. Obviously, um, not a strong need for, for the Subotowskis, but so that was, uh, interesting. So we were able to eliminate accessory use coverage and greatly reduce a lot coverage. So these are the, the numbers from, the blue is from before. And the red and, and yellow highlighted is what we're asking for now. So we're 434 square, square feet over on lot coverage, which again is a 4.1% deviation and on building coverage. Previously, we were asking for 453 square feet over, and now we're at 370. So it was reduced to about 83 square feet.
Okay, wait, hold, can you hold on a second? For, for building coverage, 14% is permitted.
Yes.
Right? And, and where are you now?
We are at 15.2%.
And you were originally at 15.5%, right?
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
A couple of things happened. Of course, the biggest, uh, scapple, uh, what the, or reduction was the lot coverage. But we also took a look at the, at the, the building itself. And we reduced, uh, and we eliminated, we had before, we had a, a bar that had a countertop, maybe open to the outside. So we've reduced that to a mini kind of kitchenette inside the living space. Uh, we took some square footage out of the bathroom changing area. And again, we eliminated the bar and reduced the, the storage. So of course, uh, what Gito was mentioning is that nice to have bathroom that's kind of accessible right from the outside, uh, for entertaining. Uh, storage, of course, uh, would be lovely to have. So it's, uh, 370 square feet. And it will offer us, uh, a little retreat in the back and, and certainly in the winter months, the whole thing will become a storage area. So it's a a nice structure located in the back. Let me show you the 3D and I, I have the before, the bottom image.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead first, Chris.
So on this thing, is there, is there a proposed HVAC in this?
Yes.
Where is it? Where's your compressor located?
Uh, we'll have a, like, it'll be one of those mini splits. So we'll locate the compressor. Uh, I'm, I'm quite sure we'll locate it, uh, on the side of the house here. So it's like a suitcase size.
Right. Okay, I, I just wanted to say I didn't see any compressor location.
Yeah, thank you. We won't need a variance for that. And of course, we conform to the side yard setbacks and building height. And actually, as a, thank you for mentioning, as a result of reducing the building, we the building height came down. Not that we needed a variance for it, but it, we lost about a foot and a half of height in the ridge. So smaller structure. And of course, a little less, um, important looking without the bar and, and the countertop. So, um, we try to make it pretty and reflect the architecture of the house, but I think it's a, a, a little bit less subdued from before. And I think the three dimensional renderings, renderings I'm going to show you. Uh, the bottom rendering is what we prior application was, which we had the patio and this covered, uh, pergola area for entertaining and then the bar, um, that one might sit at, but we've eliminated that and we've eliminated the walkways and patios. And again, I think the merits, uh, that we kind of presented last time, while we feel like this application, C2, flexible variance could be granted, is really the unique situation that this is a structure that only the Subotowskis would enjoy and see. So it's a very unique sighting. And let me take you to the photographs again.
Are we still on A4?
Yeah, it's a one, um, file.
Yeah.
Comprised of the, of, of the three slides.
And Dan, if you can please provide this as well as all the other exhibits to Eileen?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'd like to go back to what we presented last time, which hasn't changed, which is the concept of, of why this application is so unique. Cause of course, uh, you know, every application is different. There are no, um, precedent set. And, and what's you so unique about their property is that very, 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 very private in the backyard. So as a result of constructing the structure, there'll be no negative impact to the adjacent neighbors, to the neighborhood and/or the streetscape. So that, of course, is, I think, um, the strongest merit of our case is that the property can handle the additional 370 square feet of, of building coverage. And certainly, I, I believe the lot coverage is, um, a lot less of an issue now. So again, I think that's, that's primarily the focus. Of course, in addition to giving, uh, the Subotowskis this. Giving uh the super tows keys this storage bathroom. Little hangout space is that there really will be no impact to the neighbor. So really quickly, these are photographs that I took back in October and we presented last time, but. This is the pool and of course, the pool house will be located. So the adjacent neighbor to the right will will really never see it. Um even without the leaves on the trees because the elevation and the distance and the adjacent neighbor to the left. If I could find that nice picture. Sorry. Yes, okay. So we're we're. Danny, where the structure would be. And there's a over one hundred and seventy feet to the. Adjacent neighbor's house at elevation change and some mature landscaping. So again, no negative impact to them. And I believe that uh. With the reduction that we did, I I believe that there'll be no uh impairment to the intent of the zone plan, which is we talked a little bit about last. Last month was overdevelopment. And I think that uh. This doesn't seem like it's bold development, mostly because no one gets a chance to see. That's our application. And thank you for your time.
Uh anyone have any questions uh for Danny? Either while these are up or otherwise.
So 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 Dan, you're. Relying on on a C two argument that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments here?
Yes, or that the uh. For sure that there are no detriments. I mean, there are uh some. You know, the the shape of the lot. But again, I think it's a because it's a oversized lot in the R four. I believe it's a flexible. Uh C two variance. And uh I'm relying a lot on its unique situation for the property and the structure.
Because of the uh expansive tree, mature tree coverage in the uh immediately surrounding area?
Yes, and the neighbor in the back, there's about a. Thirty plus elevation change. So the neighbors in the rear yard could never see us. Likewise, we could never see them. So it's very unique the spot.
And we did, Danny, we also did approach uh the neighbors on, you know, on that side as well and show them the plan and ask for their feedback as well.
Right.
Thanks. Any question, any questions, support members?
Yeah, just quick question, just to clarify. And the pool equipment is proposed to be positioned just. Uh. At the other end of the pool, right next to the house in that little rectangular area?
Yeah, that exists today. That was part of our calculation. So the pool and. Mechanical equipment for the pools already adjacent to the house right right behind that back corner. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Regarding this application? Anyone else have any comments? Regarding this application? Do not see any. So in that case, I'll public close the public portion of the meeting. The board members, what are your thoughts?
I'll start. Um I think this is a uh this is a tough application. I'm happy to see that the applicant um has scaled back. I appreciate the efforts that um you know, the applicant went through to take our comments into account and try to scale back. I I'm still concerned that it's it's too big um and that. You know, that 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 it is too big for for the property and I'm concerned about the overages. But at the same time, it is a very, very, very private backyard. Um and and this is located so far away from either of the neighbors that, you know, that's kind of pulling me in the other direction to. Think that I could possibly support it. Um but I would be curious what my fellow board members think.
So Jessica took the words right out of my mouth. I um. Uh from from a land use perspective, I have a very hard time. Even supporting this application. And we have a lot that is massive for the R four. It's oversized for an R three. Yet here we are tonight talking about all this overage. So from a land use perspective, I just don't see where it meets the C one and the C two. I just don't. Um you know, yes, I like that it's scaled back and that it is relatively private, which is privacy outweigh the proofs. And that's where I'm torn here because, yes, you don't maybe don't see it directly from the neighbors, but it's. Just overdevelopment of a extremely large lot in the zone. And, you know, I realized that the house is built prior uh to, you know. You know, obviously, you designed it, Danny, but the house is built prior to ownership. Uh but still, here we are adding even more now to a a lot that's substantially developed. So I I I too await some other comment um as, like I said, from a proof perspective, I'm just having a hard time squaring this. Anyone else have any thoughts?
Although, um. I I agree with everything you guys were saying. And and the other thing that I was thinking as I was looking through these pictures. Yes, it was scaled down, but if the true need was just some storage in a bathroom, I was just wondering why it wasn't. A small structure with just storage in a bathroom, why it also had to have the bells and whistles of an open space to sit and relax. Um with that said. It is private back there. So. Um I am torn in wondering how much that extra five, six feet would trouble anyone if at all.
Uh I I I should if the applicants able to just make one comment, we 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 did, we removed all of the open space that was. Incorporated in the application was removed. So we we have no new open space proposed in the. Uh in the application. Is that correct, Danny?
Okay, well, okay, it it's okay to clarify, but the board is not accepting any more additional testimony.
The public portion is closed.
My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, may maybe this is something we should ask of. Of the architect just to confirm that because what what I believe we're seeing is that there is something called a hanging out area. Which with a with a with a sofa area and TV and such. So it does look like there was something in addition to what. Was specified as the. The need portion of this. And I think I would say a lot I would kind of echo Ashley's. Comments is that. That there's, yes, it's been trimmed down, but if it was really trimmed down to necessity, would some of these variances disappear entirely?
I have kind of motion to reopen the meeting.
I move.
Second, please. Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Danny.
Uh thanks. Yes. Uh so currently, the house. And oh, both building coverage and lot coverage, anything you did add uh to the property would require a variance. So we trimmed down, of course, yes, you could, we could trim more. We're about three hundred and seventy square feet, which is not a particularly. A large structure. I mean, I think a nice sized shed would be a ten by twenty. And the idea is that uh becomes two functions. In the summer. We get to uh use it as a, and again, a hangout space, uh treat from the pool. But in the winter, we get to store furniture and cushions and. All that good stuff that that uh gets acquired. So it'll have two functions. Um. So yes, this hangout space, glorified shed and uh.
Nice to hear you say.
And I think that you need the really truly, I would never ask for this application uh if I didn't feel like this was the right property for it um. Because of of its uniques.
Thank you. Close the public portion. Any other comments? Joe, you got anything? You're muted.
No, really.
Okay. Um. Anything else from members of the board? So in that case, I'll ask for a motion.
And I'm just going to remind everyone that this is a a non F A R or form of use variance vote. So. It is a simple majority that would result in the passing of the application.
Six voters.
You know, you want us to keep going?
May I ask one question of Danny before we do?
Uh, sure.
Okay, uh Danny, I'm just curious if if we ended up, if if we were looking to just do a uh. Storage area and a bathroom slash changing area, would we still be looking for a variance of some sort, either building or lock coverage?
Both, uh building and lot. Um so the best thing, I mean, lots of I love a unanimous uh vote. And um.
I understand.
I I I think if we. I I mean, I would love to see you have it. So I think one more pass at. Squeezing, I think would be uh my advice. That we don't hear a vote tonight and we get another opportunity. I I don't know, you know, throwing it out there, but that's what I would say.
A third bite of the apple, huh, Danny?
If it's okay with the board, uh yes, one more bite.
World, we're just a guest here.
Thank you.
So uh Eileen, when would you uh have time for them to come back again?
Well, the the next meeting is our last meeting of the year. It's pretty full.
Yep.
Um.
I think our last modification would be would be very uh quick and painless. Yes, Danny?
Yeah, I I know I could turn around the uh to I to the board of revised plans quickly and and I could speak very quickly, but.
So we 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 don't want to open, you know, we don't want to open burden you, of course, but uh.
So what do we?
I think we could probably, I mean, I would need them by Friday.
Okay.
Because that's when the stuff will go out. I mean, I I don't envision. They're either gonna like it or not like it. It's.
Yeah, I wanted to talk. I'll just show.
You know, it's just gonna be.
So I I lean just so we, because it'll be the last meeting of the year. What's currently on the agenda for the nineteenth?
With the high center, right?
It's the voting on the high center. Um.
The Milton.
And then um. There's five applications, four of them are. Well, I mean, there there's nothing. I think there's one F A R. The only. Relatively. Um residential, 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 residential. High Center, which we're doing first. Well, we didn't. Um and then um new singular wireless for the facility out on Bleacher Street to co-locate. Which it shouldn't really take that long.
They bring a whole bunch of professionals, though?
Oh, I hope not.
If they do, it's just gonna eat time no matter what.
They bring professionals, but it's it's like the last one we heard. Really? It it's just to get their testimony on the record. We I think we pretty much have to approve it.
No, no, I understand all that, but you know, my time planner, speaking here, speak also. Well, look, Danny, can you do it fast? I mean, that's the bottom line, because the problem is we moved to in person in January.
Yeah.
So we got notice issues.
Well, I don't know even so much that, but I know um, you know, we'll have. Turnover on the board potentially. I mean, I don't even know who's I I haven't been given a list of anyone.
I haven't either, so.
So we.
All right. So you got a few minutes, so make it count. Nineteenth.
Okay.
So this application has been carried to December nineteenth. Uh at seven o'clock via Zoom webinar. No further notice to be provided by the applicant.
Would it be crazy or unheard of, but uh. We're first will be gathered tonight and if we circle back. It's two hours.
I could. Well.
I mean.
Then we just postpone it, but I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I I the reason why I don't I don't recommend that is that we'd want to have bless you, Eileen.
Yeah.
Just verify what what the figures are and having her do that on the fly.
Okay.
Uh for.
I like to see proper drawings, too, like, you know.
Okay, fair.
We'll give you, we'll give you the time. It's not a problem.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Weeks. Uh next up, calendar thirty-eight, eighty-nine, twenty-two. This matter is also continued. Uh Cornelius uh and Dogma Guth. Mine Bailey Road, Melbourne. Uh yeah, if you just turn on your camera and microphone, you got it. Great.
All right.
Good evening. How are you, folks?
Good evening.
Good.
Uh I believe um.
Don't. Let's swear you in real quick.
Yeah, they're gonna be um.
Oh, yeah.
So so Craig, just remind me. I don't seem to have any notes on this. Did we get started on this?
We did not even start them.
Because we had such a short board and this is a a D variance. Um yeah, if we are, we 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 decided not to hear the case because we was just not fair.
Yep.
So. I thought you were referencing our height and I was offended, by the way.
That's right. Exactly. I'm six, five, just being in, I don't want to see me last year.
It's so obvious.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
All right.
So this this will be considered the the first application or the first hearing date on this application.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. So why don't we get our uh witnesses sworn?
You're both just raise your right hands, please.
Uh Ms. Booth, are you going to be testifying also? Do you swear from the testimony about to given tonight's uh proceeding to be the truth, hold truth, done by the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh one of the times you just state your name and spell your names for the record, please.
Start. So my name is Dongmei Shigun, uh D O N G M E I S H I G U T H. I live at nine uh Bailey Road, Melbourne, New Jersey, with my husband Cornelius Booth and my nine-year-old daughter and our dog. We're currently leaving a three-bedroom house with a one full bath on the second floor. And we're looking for uh turning turn the house into our four-bedroom and a second at a second bathroom on the second floor.
Okay, Mr. Peng, uh how will you be testifying this evening?
Right, so uh you mean my qualification, right?
Uh you testify as an architect?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Then your then your qualifications as an architect, please.
Yep. So my name is Xiao Xianpeng. Um I'm a licensed architect, registered architect in both uh the state of New Jersey. And the state of New York. I have over um ten years of uh practice in both states in residential, commercial and transport transportation projects. Um covering from the design phases all the way to the construction phases. So um. I am also uh have a master degree in urban and regional planning from a junior tech. Uh and uh a signer is my uh specification in beam technology as well.
And all licenses are good standing, correct?
Yes.
So so wait, Mr. Peng, are you are you testifying? First of all, are you a licensed professional planner in New Jersey?
I'm not the professional planner, but a registered architect.
Okay, so you're you're testifying as a professional solely with regard to the field of architecture tonight, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the board accepts your qualifications, so please proceed.
Thank you. So um. Give me one second to wait up. So um our property owner, uh they are planning, they are currently live in the nine Bailey uh Road. And I'm going to share my screen F Y I. Can I start to share my screen?
Please do.
All right. Okay. But and um they are planning to have probably a new mem- uh new baby in the near future. Right, so um.
Your screen is not, you haven't shared it.
Oh, oh, sorry. Do it again. Let me know when you can see it.
Nope, don't have it.
It says your screen is sharing. Does it work?
There we go.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Got it.
All right, so um currently they live in the property, which only have a three-bedroom and one and a half bathroom. Um, after they go and have a newborn baby that um their parents also plan to come, so um their parents-in-law is actually living overseas. So that may, that uh if they want to come and help, they need to stay there for an extensive uh time. And because um you know, they they live in this relatively small. No. Uh, I think there's a connection issue.
Yeah, your share dropped.
Okay. I'm gonna share it again. Let me know when it shows up.
Go ahead.
Okay, cool. So it's going to create a difficulty for um Mrs. Good to provide her mother duty. And at the meantime, to keep a balance of the family's daily necess- uh necessity. So this application trying to turn the house from a three-bedroom units to a four-bedroom unit and want to add two bathrooms to accommodate the increased stay-in-home situation as well as, you know, both Mr. Guth and Mrs. Guth is actually uh stay working from a lot recently. Um, because the work-from-home situation, we uh they also.
I'm losing a
Yeah.
connection here.
You don't have a stable connection, Mr. Peng.
Yep, I I'm switching, I'm switching my connection right now. Is it better now?
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, let's see. I'm switching to a new connection. Is it better?
Okay, well, yeah, continue.
Yep, so um they need to add the in in-home office and study to uh, you know, keep them focused on the work. Meanwhile, the rest of the family can uh keep running. So uh as you see, um today, uh this proposed plan actually uh trying to seek four variants. Um, the first variant is like six oh six point uh two E two A building coverage. As you see, uh, this is a site plan. This is the existing condition, and the right-hand side is the proposed plan, right? Um, the existing building coverage is eighteen point eight percent, and the total square footage is uh one thousand two hundred and fifty-two. And the proposed building co- coverage is fifteen eighty square foot, which ends up as twenty-three point seven percent. And the permitted uh percentage uh from the Mewben Township is twenty-three percent. Literally, this proposed plan is zero point seven percent over the requirement. So I want to bring this up, that um the lot, this lot is in a R six zoning uh district. And the minimum uh lot width of this uh property of R six X is sixty feet width. Uh, but unfortunately, this lot is a fifty-feet-wide lot. So the property in the discussion has um is is actually an undersized property in this way, right? Such a condition, it it definitely create another hardship for um a proper space layout. And it will generate extra circulation space to make a, you know, um, the 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 living space a proper, right? And it's elongated, as we know, it the corridor is supposed to be longer as well. So um the current plan is a optimized result after going couple rounds of design iteration. And um as you see, the back of the house, try to minimize the impact of creating more hard surfaces and trying to align with the um the next neighbor as well. Um, it's trying to keep a balance of the decent amount of area to accommodate a change of life lifestyle of the home ownership. So please be noted that uh the building coverage only increase actually three hundred and twenty-eight square foot. Compared to the lot size, it might look a lot, but it's actually a similar garage footprint. Right, the nature of this narrower lot shape makes it a mass actually to generate a more hallway instead of the livable space. And um the second variance we are seeking is a six oh six point two E to B lot coverage. And also we see from here, um, the existing lot is fit one percent, which is three thousand six hundred and five square foot. And the proposed lot carriage is fifty-four point five percent, ends up three thousand six hundred and thirty-three square foot. As you see from this two plan, we trying to minimize the impact, trying not to extend it to um the natural surfaces. Uh, the existing coverage is or uh I I also want to bring it up that the existing coverage is already a non-conforming situation compared to the forty-five percent requirement. So this proposed plan trying to keep the footprint within the existing surfaces.
M- Mr. Peng, can I interrupt you for a second? What is the existing lot coverage?
The existing lot coverage in terms of square footage is three thousand.
Well, in terms of, in terms of percentage, so if what's, if the maximum required is forty-five percent.
Yes.
What do you have currently?
Fifty-four point one percent, and the proposed one is fifty-four point five percent.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So um as it's also a common challenge in Mewben's R six zoning district, right? A detached garage uh in the back, it's actually create extra surfaces to have this uh driveway as well. Right, it's it's uh extremely long, and we also need to provide a extra maneuver space. So um due to the fifty feet front width, um more circulation area will be a mass as well to 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 make it a proper layout. And the third variance we are seeking today is six oh six point two E, one E, one C. It's a side yard setback. Um, as you see from the front elevation, this is the existing wall. We basically did not move it anywhere. We did not extend it closer to the property line. But um because we adjust the the uh added area and also the uh roof ridge a little bit, one end of the ridge did protrude the sky plant. All right, so this is um there are.
But Mr. Mr. Peng.
Yes.
What is the existing, um, I'm sorry, what's required for the side yard setback? What's existing and what's proposed?
Yep, so the required side yard setback is eight feet. And uh the existing side yard setback is eight feet two inches. We did not move the eight feet two inches. Basically, we extend existing wall all the way up to um getting a little bit extra uh area in the attic. All right, so um we we see this uh protrusion basically have no impact on the neighbors. And I'm gonna bring in uh my drawing as well. So this is a uh snapshot from the Google.
Okay, hold, hold on.
Yep.
Hold on. This is not, this has not been provided to the board yet, correct?
Yes, it's not.
Okay, so we have to mark um everything that we haven't provided to the board yet as an exhibit.
Okay.
So this is gonna be exhibit A one.
Okay.
And you need to provide a foundation for this. So what is, what are we looking at? It's an aerial.
It's aerial, Google Earth Pro.
And what year is it from?
Uh, the year, I have to look at the day, um, but yes, I can put it on. So I believe it's uh I uh twenty uh is August seventeen twenty twenty.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. So um looking at this area plan, right, uh between this property nine Bailey Row. And then uh this wall, this popular line, is the popular line that we have the uh side yard setback. Side on on the side yard setback, um, as you see, we have a grown-up tree here. If I'm gonna bring a um space view, we can say it's exhibition one B. But we can see this a huge tree around this property, and this side, the 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 pointing upside, the the upper edge side is the uh side yard we are talking about. But basically, um, we are not providing any impact on the visual or privacy or the uh blocking any sunlight of the next building, which is an multi-floor um apartment building. All right, um, so also I have uh roughly measure from the Google Earth Pro. The distance from the property line to the next building uh wall exterior wall is forty-five feet. Forty-five feet is actually way more than the minimum requirements um of the sixteen feet combined together. All right, so um the fourth variance we are seeking is the six oh six point two E to B floor area ratio, which also known as F A R. Um, the required F A R is thirty-six percent, which ends up as um two thousand three hundred and ninety-six square foot. The existing floor area right now is um one thousand nine hundred eighty-five square foot, while the proposed floor area is two thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine square foot.
Mr. Peng, what what is the existing F A R as a percentage?
Mm-hmm. So let me pull this up. So the existing um uh F A R is twenty-nine point eight percent. Right, and.
Wait, wait, wait. So the existing F A R is twenty-nine, twenty-nine point eight percent?
Yes.
Which 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 is compliant?
It's compliant, yes, the current F A I is compliant.
Okay, right, and so you're going, so you're going from twenty-nine point eight percent to forty-three point five percent?
Yeah, I'm gonna explain the detail in a little.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so um as as a undersized lot that um thirty-six percent will natively generate less habitant area of the family.
Lots, the lot is not undersized, the lot is oversized.
Uh, you you mean the width as well?
Well, the lot's not undersized, it's just the lot width is less, but you're, you can't really say the lot is undersized.
Okay, I apologize. I I I would say that the narrower side is actually generating a little bit, yep. Generate a little bit hardship for the layout. Right, um, so we would definitely have extra corridor area, right? Um, so um the proposed plan seeks the possibility to utilize the attic area to accommodate, you know, the family's new challenges and necessity. Um, and according to Mewben Development Regulation and zoning ordinance article three dash three oh one dot two two, only if the habitable portion, which is six point six feet height in the attic, is more than fifty percent of the floor immediately below shall be counted. Right, so um the current, the proposed added area, which higher than six point six feet is six hundred and six square foot. Um, and the immediately floor below the attic is one thousand one hundred and seven square foot. Uh, we are actually at fifty-four point seven percent of the floor immediately below. So um four point seven over the fifty percent requirement, uh which ends up, we counting the entire uh edit as the uh uh floor area. And if we look into the plan, um in the portion of it is been used as a mechanical room. The mechanical room has a hundred and two square foot, and technically, if we minor a hun- hun- a hundred and two square foot from the six hundred and six square foot, we are actually less than fifty percent of the uh of the area immediately below it, right? So um based on the condition and relatively narrow shape of the building and the lot, we are kindly to 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 uh request the board to consider the hardship of this um plan and lot and um consider our application. So um that's all from my end.
So Rob, I I think the the architect said that the second um photo would be marked B one. I think we should mark that A two. Well, what, so we had it, we had an aerial photo.
Mm-hmm.
That was A one. And then what, I'm sorry, Steve, what are you asking about?
There were, there were two photos, and the architect was marking the second photo B one when he should mark it A two.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I was considering A one as the two photos.
Okay.
In in terms of, but we can, we can, we can market A two, that's fine.
Okay.
So let's do that then. So A two will be the other color, and and Mr. Peng, you understand that you have to provide these photos to Miss Data, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, you keep referring to your lot as being undersized, but it's actually not undersized. It's actually oversized by ten percent, correct?
But the 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 width, the front width is actually narrower, right? So in terms to lay it out properly to accommodate others, like, you know, necessity, we have to increase the corridor a little bit as well.
Right, but as for F A R, that actually helps you, having sixty-six hundred square feet versus the six thousand.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah. Uh, and you can stop your screen share, I think, if you're finished with that testimony.
Definitely. Bear with me a little bit.
Sure, anyone on the board um have any questions?
I I I'm just curious, sir, have you presented to this board before?
No, this is first time.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, you may have covered it, but uh maybe I missed it. Uh, how much of the floor area is being added at the two levels?
The second level, you mean? Right? Give me one second. Um, I I think I have to stop sharing here. All right. So the second floor, uh, we are looking at, give me one second. Twelve, I'm gonna just quickly calculate that. So about two hundred and eighty square foot.
That's the second floor?
Yep. It's it's basically a a extrusion from the plan.
And the balance difference is all on the first floor, which is about eight hundred something square feet?
You mean the balance of the square footage?
Mm-hmm.
What uh do you mind to explain that again?
So you have a floor area uh from one nine eight five square feet going up to two eight nine nine square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Which is of roughly about nine hundred something square feet?
Mm-hmm.
So the two eighty is on the second floor, the balance seven hundred something is on the first floor. Is that how?
No, the added as well. So each floor is actually um, you know, uh divided almost like the same area added to to the to the um the extra square footage.
So two eighty on the two levels and the balance is the attic. Is that how I would break it up?
Give me one second. Yep, yep, roughly.
Thanks.
Any other questions? From board? Any questions from the audience? Regarding this application? Any comments from the audience? In that place, we will close the public portion of this hearing. So board members, what are your thoughts?
So Craig, if I can just interrupt or interrupt us for a second, just want to remind the board that um this is an application for four variances, three are C variances that you can consider, I guess, under C one or C two, it's up to the board. In addition to which, we have a um F A R variance uh cognizable under um forty point fifty-five D dash seventy D for the municipal land use law. It's a form of a D variance, which requires five affirmative votes. So the applicant basically needs to go five for seven uh in terms of. So the applicant basically needs to go five for seven uh in terms of uh getting the requisite uh number of votes for an approval. And as the board is aware from other uh FAR applications, the uh, the focus is certainly whether the site is going to accommodate the problems associated with the proposed use, but with a larger floor area than permitted by uh by ordinance. Um, certainly, you, um, the applicant needs to demonstrate the positive criteria or special reasons for relief, as well as the negative criteria, um, you know, with no substantial detriment to the public and no substantial impairment to the zone plan is not ignored, thanks.
Thank you, Rob. So with that, any comments?
Oh.
Got any?
Who's, I'm sorry, me or Joe?
Oh, Amy.
So um, all right, I'll go first, so I I take the point that was made uh that the width of the lot is, you know, um fifty feet, so it's it's a little, um, the width is is less than what would be considered for a lot this size. Um, and so perhaps in thinking about that and the hardship that that might create, I could, you know, potentially support um a variance related to the side yard. Um, you know, because the width of the lot is not as wide as one might expect for uh a lot in this zone. But but the point was also made that the lot is oversized, that the depth of the lot is much larger, and so overall you have a a much bigger lot. And with that thought in mind, I don't see the hardship and the justification for some of the other variances that are being requested. Um, in particular, um, you know, the lot coverage and the floor area uh ratio and the building coverage as well, although the 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 variance is much smaller on that one, so perhaps I could see, you know, thinking, well, you know, it's 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 not a lot that you're asking for, so perhaps I could support that, but the others are are significant. And um, I I really, I I find it, I I don't see how personally I could support those. Um, and that's where my thinking is on this particular application.
So uh, am I okay to like reply to this?
No, uh, right now we've closed the public portion.
Okay.
Right now, co- common only.
All right.
Uh, Joe, go ahead.
I I I guess this is a case in which I have to uh kind of let my hair down a little bit. Uh, this proposal is too big for the lot. Pretty obvious. Two and a half floor uh addition to the rear. Uh, it has an impact on the property on the corner to the right. Uh, now that is an apartment house. As I, I I didn't check it out by going, walking into it. But looking at it, it looks like an apartment house to me. But the people who live there are entitled to protection as well as uh if they own property in a uh more broader sense. Let me say this. The um it's getting to be a problem in this town that when people have expansion of their properties, the expansion of their families, I should say, but they don't move to another house, which is what they should do. They think that they can come before the zoning board and uh seek all kinds of variances to enlarge the house so they can stay where they want to stay. Uh, this includes bringing parents in from abroad and adding new children to the family. I think that the variances that are sought here are excessive. At the, just looking at the uh site plan, it's obvious that a two and a half story addition to the rear of this house is too much house for the lot. Uh, I say to these people, no, I'm not, you're not gonna have my vote. Uh, and uh, if you want to expand the family in the ways that you suggested, move, find it, find another place that's bigger. Don't overcrow this this lot, which I think would be the result of granting these variances, which are not insubstantial. Anyway, that's the way I feel about this application.
Thank you, Joe, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what the applicant is, the reasoning behind the applicant's uh requests are reasonable, expanded family, extended family, that's that's very common, we see that a lot. Um, but uh, and it's this, it's unfortunate that the architect hasn't had the benefit of presenting to this board before, because I think if he had, he might not be so surprised by our reaction to these very extreme variances relative to our history, perhaps in other other districts where you presented, these would not be considered extreme, but they are here in this town and we and and so we are, unfortunately, the applicant has kind of crossed over the line from um trying to build out a property to really uh needing uh a larger home. Uh, and this lot can't support uh the larger home that the applicant unfortunately.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments?
Yeah, I I'd like to just say, um, I agree with what everyone else has said, you know, interestingly, the the lot coverage variance, they're they're already um, you know, maxed out because its maximum is forty-five percent and they're at fifty-four point one, it's going up to fifty-four point five, but where my real issue is, is this is a really big FAR variance that they're seeking. And um, you know, they talk about having one, one bathroom for three bedrooms. I don't, I I I wouldn't go, I wouldn't say that it's unreasonable to want a a second bathroom or, you know, and you know, for for the three bedrooms. Um, but what what they're asking for now is just, it it's just too big. Um, the the property can't handle it, so I'm not in favor of this application.
So.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, I would extend the hardship beyond just the um, the side yard situation, do the undersized width, undersized width, but I could see an argument being made that given the extent to which the driveway takes up such a large portion, that does that contribute to the, you know, to the lot coverage? You know, being so high, I suppose that's reasonable to say, that 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 could be said. It was even that additional uh ru- room being given, this is really putting this, it really puts the property, these additions really put the property over the edge in terms of what's in in terms of what the zoning plan, you know, intends and what this lot seems to be able to handle.
So when I look at this property, one of the things that that sticks out is obviously this this detached garage, and you were to eliminate the attached garage, this house is still over FAR. That's, that's to me what really sort of is resounding issue here. So that's, it's, even if that was given back, all four hundred-ish square feet or three hundred square feet or whatever that garage is, this application would still be over FAR. So that garage really isn't adversely affecting it if they were given that gift, it's still way over. So, and the other thing that probably, that really bothers me is is looking at the elevations. I mean, thi- this house has an enormous massing to it with its side profile, and I think that it, you know, when you, when you have a massive deviation of FAR like this, or when it becomes this large, it really shows in the house, it really shows in the massing of the house, especially since this is a multi-floor development. So if this house is completed as it's currently applied for, I think it's one of those things you'll drive by and say, wow, you know, how did that one get through? Uh, because of its, it's such a large size. So I too would not support this application. So Mr. Pang, here's where you stand, it doesn't look like you have the support for this, so your choices are to either go to a vote or to amend your plan and come back, so I'll you know, defer to you as to what you'd like to do.
Yeah, we would definitely like uh modify and come back to you.
Okay, so chances are it's not gonna be this year, so uh, Eileen, any thoughts on that one?
We will have to carry it to the nineteen, because we don't have, we didn't adopt a calendar for next year yet. Well, actually, like, no, I'm I'm sorry, we do have the first meeting of the year. We approved it last year, so I think that's January. One second.
Uh, ninth, I think.
Yeah, January ninth. Um. And we're on site, we're back.
Great, so we're back on site on the ninth.
I mean, Rob, would they, if we're carrying this application, would?
No, if anything that is being carried to twenty twenty-three with li- live attendance will require renotice.
Um, do we need to, do we need to provide a feedback right now? Because if it's related to the written notice, then I need to get um Mr. Good and Miss Sis Good's concession.
Well, that, you're also, if you change your numbers, I'm not sure how your notice is provided, but you may have to change your notice anyway, based on what you're asking for or not asking for. But that's gonna be up to you.
So do do I do want to speak on uh in terms of this issue?
Who are you asking that to?
I'm asking uh to property owner.
Um. Can we, can we talk after this?
Well, M- M- Ms. Good, why don't we do this? Why don't we um agree to carry it to a date certain with notice to be provided, and then you can speak offline with your architect and decide, you know, what you want to do, you could certainly write a letter to the board, you could do, you know, any number of things, but I think for purposes of maintaining a jurisdiction and letting the public know where we are with this application, I did, I think it is appropriate unless it's being withdrawn, which it sounds like it's not, um, that at least an announcement be made to let the public know when the next hearing is, with the understanding that you're gonna have to renotice for two reasons, number one is that because we're gonna go back to live meetings in January for this Board of Adjustment. And number two is Mr. Plattner appropriately stated, if you are coming back, it sounds like it's it's likely that there's gonna be at least some change in the plan, and if so, that would require some renoticing anyway.
Okay, so let's let's come back in January then.
Then the ninth it is?
Yeah.
So Mr. Pang, then you'll provide notice if need be, most likely will, well, you don't have to do any for the date, these are back in person, so remember on the ninth, we are back at Town Hall. Okay, this is, it's not going to be a Zoom hearing anymore.
Okay, sounds good, so we we need to do the public uh in on the news as well?
Correct, you're gonna have to notify that the meeting is now going to be in person.
Uh huh.
And then, of course, any changes that you're making to your application, and like I said, depending on how you noticed,
Uh huh.
but you'll have to make appropriate changes to that notice also and circulated.
Okay.
Very good.
Cool.
And we will see you on the ninth.
I can give them one.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Next up, we have Alan Amy Fong, twenty-five Oswego Lane, application thirty-eight ninety-five twenty-two.
We're doing fifty-four heart turn, right?
Oh, that is fifty, that's twenty-five Oswego, I'm sorry, is that, am I out of order?
I don't know, I, maybe I'm.
No, I got, I got, my next one I have is twenty-five Oswego and then, and then fifty-four heart turn.
Okay, okay, I I had a lot of work, no problem.
So that's Amy and Alan Fong. I don't, I look who the architect.
So twenty-five Oswego, right?
Twenty-five Oswego. Oh, classy.
Okay.
This is the one way where we have the corrected drawing sent out, right?
No, that was fifty-four heart.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
Hello? Good evening, Mrs. Fong, how are you this evening?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, good, we'll bring in there's Tim.
Yep.
How are you, Mr. Classy?
Hi, everybody.
Good to see you. Uh, we're swear you in and then we'll proceed.
If everybody just raise their right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to given tonight's proceeding to be the truth, the whole truth, and for the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, uh, your names for the record, uh, just one at a time now.
Uh, Amy Fong.
And Alan Fong. And Timothy Classy.
Thank you.
Uh, who would like to start?
Amy.
Okay, I'll start. Um, thank you for meeting with us, uh, taking the time tonight, Ford, um, you know, we've moved in.
Mr. Chairman, I have have them as frozen, they
Sorry?
I have their visual as frozen.
Oh, yeah, oh, there they go. Hmm, okay.
Better?
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
All right. Uh, no, we're good, all right, thank you so much for taking the time tonight, um, for meeting with us. Uh, we've been here since February twenty eighteen, and Tim was actually our architect when we first came in. Uh, we have two kids, they go to Deerfield Island Lentry, we love the neighborhood. Uh, we fell in love with the house and we made some uh improvements when we first moved in. Now that we've lived in it for five years now, we've realized that, you know, we have, our kids are growing up, they have bikes, they have uh soccer gear, sports gear, ski gear, everything, and we and we tend to uh keep a lot of the stuff in the second bay. And we actually don't have a mudroom that we store typical shoes, book bags, so everything's really in the one of the car bays, and we tend to leave our other car just park on the driveway and one parked inside. And we don't have a lot of storage right now to handle a lot of that uh item. So right now, what we're seeking is to kind of have an expansion for a third car garage and also an additional mudroom area that would be connected to the garage, just so that, you know, we have two cars where, you know, I'm back and forth from the city for four to five days a week. My husband works from home, um, but is out picking up the kids, and we have constantly people, uh, my in-laws, my parents coming over and staying, so we are hoping to get that approved so that we can keep as many of the cars inside um and also be able to have room to store all their stuff.
Okay, I can, I I can pick it up from here.
Just give us qualifications real quick.
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and New York and been licensed for about thirty years. Graduated New Jersey Institute of Technology, my office is in Short Hills on Chatham Road and it's been there for about thirty years. And uh, my license is currently in good standing, I've been pure in front of this board and many other boards, kind of at this point now, sort of across the US a little bit now, as time's gone on. And so I I paid up, I I think I'm okay with my license.
Super.
Thank you.
Well, qualifications accepted.
Thank you. Um, so the problem with the site, which I guess I might as well just give you right from the beginning, is that we're over on building coverage, and so that's really the variance that we're seeking tonight. In addition to that, we had a variance we were seeking, well, there's two variances related to the building coverage, and there's two variances that are related to a small pool that we're putting in the backyard, and the funds have decided to delete the pool. And the funds have decided to delete the pool. Okay, so that actually pulls two of these variances away, and I'll go through them in further detail as we go along tonight, but. They just decided that. It it just wasn't worth it to do the pool, but they'd like to really. Get the car out of the driveway, get it into a garage. And, you know, they've got the bicycles. They've got all the stuff. They've got their sort of mudroom has become part of their garage now. So the idea of this application is really to build a one-story mudroom. In a mud, one-story garage. Single, a single car so that we can handle those two functions. Okay? I'm just gonna, I'd like to share my screen. And I'll just take you. I'm gonna run you through it relatively quickly. The site itself is on the corner of Oswego and Long Hill. Everybody can see my screen, correct? And we're really about forty feet on Oswego. We're about forty feet off of um. Long Hill. And if I kind of projected that forty feet sort of in that line. You know, parallel to the road. We're asking tonight to build into this area. So the front yard deviation that we're requesting is relatively minor. It's really the um. Building coverage that's the issue. The other thing that we were originally doing was a pool in the back, but that is out of the picture right now.
So so Tim, what you're, let's just stop there for a second.
Sorry.
So the so the front yard setback. Because it's not clear from the application materials that the that what is required is forty is what? What is required for Long Hill front yard setback?
It would be required to be forty. Well, let me see.
Is is it forty and proposed is thirty-six point forty-six?
Yeah, the. Yeah, the average. For the street is thirty-six point four six. So.
Thank you.
So we're required to be at forty. Although the existing building is at forty point eight-six right here at this point. Where I'm showing it to you right there. The other. Um setbacks going up Oswego don't really make a difference here. It's really just on this side. And you can see that if we could nestle a building into this corner. We would only have a little bit of a deviation from that dimension. So we defaulted really to forty because the average is actually in the street less than forty.
Actually. Yeah, I kind of forty. What is it on Long Hill? What's the current? Front yard setback forty point?
Eight-six.
Okay, so the way it works is. That's already part of the average. That, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's actually part of the average. You're already. That's already in the average. So. I don't understand why you're. As long as you're not exceeding. What you currently are. I don't know why.
We're going closer, Eileen. We're going to.
Right, they're they're going four feet closer.
We come in.
Okay.
We come in closer than that.
Okay.
So that that's why we ran into the problem.
Okay.
And I only had to do that because. I kind of had to make the garage wide enough to fit a car. You know, garage is a funny thing. It's like. It's like doing an office building with parking below. You sort of. Size the office building for the cars more than you do for the office building. So that's really it for my existing survey. So I did to see the neighborhood. This is.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Uh, I, these plans submitted with the application or not?
No, this is a new picture.
So. So how many photos are you going to show in this?
I have, I have the site plan and then I have one elevation.
All right. So why don't we mark this separately? So the A one. Is going to be an aerial of the the house.
Yes.
Property.
Yes.
And and is this what Google Earth or something along those lines?
It's Google Earth, August twenty twenty.
Go ahead.
And I I just wanted the board to realize that. On my Long Hill side, which is all this. It's approximately. But if I come to the bisecting line, the way we. Talk about this front yard, it's about five thousand seven hundred square feet. If I look at this front yard on this side, it's about four thousand four hundred. So the two front yards together are about ten thousand one hundred square feet. Whereas the entire lot area is nineteen thousand eight fifty-eight. It's really. Just a little under what's required. What's required is twenty thousand. Basically, from what we're saying tonight is. Matches what is required. But. Fifty percent of this lot area is actually in the front yard. And that's one reason why. I felt that I could put sort of a small one-story structure right here where I have the cursor. And it would have minimal impact onto the neighborhood because there is literally such a large front yard area to this. Um, this street side of this house. If I go up this street. The average of the street is thirty-six point four six, right? It's um. You know, four feet less than that point or closest point right from there to Long Hill. Hope all that made sense. If I look at. The area that we're talking about tonight. This is the existing two-car garage.
Hey, wait, Tim.
Yeah.
Eight-two, please identify what this is.
This is a. Elevation of the building, a photograph of the side of the building from Long Hill. Taken September twenty twenty-one.
And you know, just uh, so we're clear at the end of this hearing, you're going to provide all the exhibits to Eileen, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So what I'm sorry, Tim, was it, what did you say the photo date was August?
September twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
So what I'm seeking tonight is to add a one-story garage into this corner and a mudroom. So that we can connect to the existing kitchen. And then it does now go into my sheets, which are exactly the same as your sheets. So I have no more exhibits to the best of my knowledge. If I come into the. You know, the pool is still on here, but I'm just gonna. Ignore the pool for now. That is my forty. There's my. Setback line coming across. Parallel to the street. That small area, which I'll show you again, is the actual area of the deviation for front yard setback that we're talking about tonight, that front corner. This is my garage. That little box right there is the mudroom. And then we have added this driveway so that we can turn and drive into that garage. The existing doors. Are both facing that way. What I was saying before is that this lot area is very large in the front yard, and this front yard is large. The rear yard area in this house is small, and that's part of the. Problem that we kind of always see in a corner lot. If I go to my. BOA two sheet. I'm now. Coming up the driveway. Long Hill is now going up and down on the sheet, like the way I'm running the cursor. I come in the driveway. That area is the area that I added. To the driveway. This is the pool that's now not part of the application. And I come in and that is my new garage. There. And then I come in. To my mudroom area. That's my new mudroom. Both of these are these one-story buildings. You can see. The average line coming through at the thirty. I think it's thirty-six, I think. And then you can see our required line coming through. And that. Triangle there is really our deviation. That's our setback issue. I'm gonna try to. I think I can zoom in a little better. Right, we are at thirty-six point four six. There's forty required. It's actually that. Triangle. Then we're also just telling you that the average of the street. Is actually less than we are. So even though we're a deviation for being. Under the forty, we are still. Better than what is actually required. I'm gonna go on to. Oh, so anyway, you can see it kind of a little better here. I come into my garage. I come up the stairs. It came right into the kitchen. You see it had a very small mudroom. And we just kind of doubled the size of the mudroom so that we could get some cubbies and a closet into here. This. Is like a um. A little hallway right now. It's like, I just, they have hooks on the wall, but it's very tight, like. You trip over everything. It should come in. Like um. And I still don't have.
Hey, Tim, Tim, can you go back for a second on the um floor plan of the garage?
Yeah, I mean, I'm still talking a mudroom. It's only. I don't know, sixty square feet or something.
Yeah, Tim, with regard to that, what what is the depth? Of the existing garage?
The existing garage deep.
What's that?
It's, I just want to measure it for you, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not as deep as I thought. The existing garage is twenty-four feet, but that includes that stairway that's going down to the basement. So if I really measure the garage. For a car. It's really about. Twenty-one feet. Right? If I said, you know, sort of from the back face of the wall. To where the. Sort of railing is to prevent you from going, falling into the stairway. That dimension's only twenty feet.
Okay, I got it. Thanks, thank you.
I think a normal garage. The two-car garage should be twenty-four by twenty-four. To get into some smaller houses, I'd be at twenty-two by twenty-two. This garage is about twenty-two wide right now. We are asking to add to it. Twelve feet. In width. That's what we're asking tonight. We put in a nine-foot door. The existing doors in the garage are also nine foot. If you see a garage from nineteen twenty, it's about eighteen by eighteen. About nineteen fifty, they're like. Twenty-one by twenty-one. You know, the garage kind of has gotten a little bigger as time's gone on. Now I'm gonna go to my third sheet. You can see the. Roof of the existing garage. It's a gable-end roof that's. Facing to the side. If I'm looking at the house from Long Hill, which is where this. Image is. This is my garage addition. And then all I did was put a gable into that addition to break the mass up a little bit. And that's really the mudroom. Addition that's right in that area. If I look at this from. The sort of garage side itself. The garage side itself, you can see that there's. The existing two-car garage. And then to the left of it, we've added that twelve feet. And we came and it's. Another gable, which is really that gable when we look from the front, right? So and then I cross the gable through to give the. Inside face of the building a little architectural detail. If I go to my last picture, this is really. You know, from the. Lawn inside looking back out. And all we did was add that gable to the roof to add the detail to it. Those sheets are exactly the same as your sheets. If I go to the actual application. This is. You know, a.
It's missing also.
Our four. Zone nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet. I'm gonna take you. Really to page twelve. And well, I think maybe I'd like to show you page eleven, I guess, first. You can see that. My lot shows a lot of front yard, very. The minimalist on the rear yard, but when you look at it from the street. This looks as if it's a hundred and forty-three foot wide lot. Right? That's part of what a corner does. And that's the reason why I think this site itself can take this added. Building coverage, right? We was way under on on lot coverage in this case. If I look at the. Um, attachment F. Yeah, or attachment E, I'm sorry. The first. Variance here is really for front yard setback. It is existing at forty point eight six. It, the average. Or our proposed is thirty-six point four six. Or required is forty. So the deviation request is that triangle that's three point five four feet, right? I gotta say, it's about ten feet long, three point five four at the max. The second variance is deleted because it was the pool. The third variance is actually the biggest variance that we have. This is the the variance is for building coverage. The building coverage is. Allowed to be fourteen percent or twenty-seven eighty square feet. It's existing at fourteen point eight. Percent. So it's existing by point eight percent over at twenty-nine thirty-one. Our request tonight is to bring it to sixteen point six percent, which is. Three thousand three oh one square feet. It's a. Variance requested two point six percent or five hundred and twenty-one square feet. But. All for just a one-story building. And. It's. An increase. Of one point eight percent. Over what's existing, right? Even though the variance request is two point six percent. It's an increase of three hundred and seventy square feet. Even though from a. Zoning calculation, it's five hundred and twenty-one square feet. Does that make sense to everybody? I can see, Rob, it's making sense too. I don't know. If I um.
That's that's dangerous, Tim. Hey, hey, Tim, are there, are there other? Three bay garages? In the neighborhood?
That would be a good question for you, Alan, really.
Yeah, there's a couple, actually, two, I think, two of our neighbors on Long Hill have three bays. That's like maybe about two houses away.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the newer houses that are Long Hill also have three bays. Um, I don't need to tell you how many new houses are probably along here, but.
Is that new garage? Accessible? I'm I'm looking at, it's a rather relatively narrow driveway existing. It just seems like a really tight. Turn into that. Garage. Is that gonna, is it, is it maneuverable? I don't know. It just looks really tight.
From the face of the garage to the face, the back face of the driveways. Twenty-nine feet. So it's it's pretty good. Actually.
No, I meant like coming in, if you're coming in the driveway to make that turn to get into that bay.
I'm gonna go back because that's exactly what I just did. What I did was. From the. Face of our proposed garage. To the face of the curb, the edge of the curb is twenty-nine feet. So that's what I'm saying. It's pretty good, right? We'd like it to be, I don't know. Five anyway, twenty-three, it's, you know. It's pretty. it's pretty good, actually. I go, I want you to see. Just want to make a big fuss over the fact that the the lot coverage and FAR are still undersized, very undersized here. You know, the lot coverage itself is under by a thousand square feet. Even with this improvement and and actually that includes the pool, which is another six hundred. So this lot coverage is under by one thousand nine hundred square feet. The FAR is also under by about fifty square feet or forty square feet. So the FAR isn't an issue on this site either. The only issue that we really have is this building coverage really, in our case, for this one story building. So if when I look at this site, it to me, if you look at even the shadow of this uh the shadow that's created in this picture. This is my exhibit. My A two exhibit. Um, the shadow mark is basically where the garage that we're talking about is going in. It seems as a one story building to me, it has really no impact on the neighborhood. It also helpful to the neighborhood under the concept that we can get the car out of the go out of the driveway and into the garage and therefore clean up the neighborhood a little bit. Maybe pick up some of the junk that's lying around the yard a little bit and get it. Not that they have a lot of junk in the yard, but not then get it into the garage so that we can sort of clean up the site. And you know, better for the community as a whole. So I I think that the concept of being able to get a third car garage on this site so that we can kind of remove that car off of the off of the driveway is actually beneficial to the neighborhood and its impact is definitely minimized under the concept that it's really simply a one story, one car garage. The zone itself allows for a three car garage. Um, we comply really in every way except for our building coverage. Okay, there any questions or concerns?
Anyone have any questions about Amy?
I'll ask one. I just want to understand one thing. It's it it sounded like from from what the applicant said that the issue they're having is, you know, storage for all the stuff their kids have. Is that? Am I understanding that correctly? Or is the issue something is the issue that they have three cars?
No, the the issue is there is a lot of bikes and stuff that we like to keep on the side, but right now all that stuff is hogging up one of the spaces of the garage. So we rarely can kind of park the second car into the garage right now. We'd like to eventually, you know, when my parents come over, they could have their car uh to park their car, but also we like to, in the meantime, when it's not being used, to put all of that, you know, sports gear, bike, scooter, ski gear, skateboards, everything in that um in the garage side. So it's used as a storage as well.
Right. So I guess the 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 question I have or the thing that's not completely clear to me is why do we need to build another garage versus storage?
Like a shed? You mean a shed?
Or or some sort of storage that you you've built something specifically, you're changing the driveway, you're building um a garage to fit a car and with the with the specifications, the dimensions of what it needs to fit a car. Um, and that's the part I don't understand. And maybe the dimensions of what you need for storage is is somehow different. That that I I just want to understand that. Oh, maybe it's lesser even frankly, because you know, to store skis and bikes isn't the same as as parking a car.
Yeah, I mean, between the cars, I mean, at some point, too, you know, I'm getting cars, I'll be getting a car soon. Um, at some point, when the kids grow up, they will have cars as well. Um, and that amount of space, there's just going to be a litter of of things in that driveway. Um, and we're just preparing for that eventual out really. Um, the sooner we do it, the better I feel, obviously, with times being the way they are now.
That's all I think that's
Yeah, I I mean, I guess it makes sense that you could say add on half of the garage, right, to make it storage in the front, but enough that probably I think it would be smarter to make it a full garage. Because I think it probably looks more reasonable on the house than a what I'm gonna say is almost like a storage building that's kind of attached to the house or a storage area. I mean, I I think it makes more sense if it was the board was okay, then it would just be a full car garage that looks as if it was always part of the house, you know, that's all I'm saying.
That's it for me.
I understand. A quick question around the the extra bay that is being created. There is also a mudroom element that you kind of uh showed that will add up with the existing uh passage. So it makes it a lot of a little bigger uh um mudroom. What what is being added in terms of garage? You mentioned the new bay is twenty four by twelve. What is the dimensions for the the mudroom piece that that you're adding?
The added mudroom area is five feet by ten feet. So fifty square feet. That's what we've added. I kind of big. I went into towards Long Hill five feet wide to get that space. It gave me enough to put cubbies in in coat closet. You know, it's a pretty good sized coat closet. And a pantry. We added a pantry into there also. And I'm just really looking at my BOA two sheet now.
So the three seventy square feet that you said the extra essentially comes in from the garage, which is twenty four by twelve, roughly about two ninety. Uh, and the balance eighty comes in from this mudroom plus the pantry. Is that is that is that correct understanding?
Yes, the pantry is actually in that garage area as I look at it. Yes. That's that's correct. Thank you.
You stop sharing screens, Tim.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions from board members? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? In that case, I suppose, oh, there we go. If you could please turn on your camera and unmute yourself.
Oh, my God, my camera. I'm really not dressed here. Um, hi, I'm a neighbor.
Wait, 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 we got to swear you in.
One second. Do you do you have a question or comment? Because I went through that.
No, I just I just have a comment.
Right, in one second, we're gonna
Oh, okay.
Just ra- raise your right hand, please. Do you swear? Do you swear from the test? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
Sure.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Um, Carolina Bayda, C A R O L I N E O B A Y D A.
And your address? So sorry.
Four fifteen Long Hill Drive.
And where's your house and location to the property question?
On Long Hill Drive towards
Oh, no, in relation to the property question that you're the neighbors have.
I don't know, probably the third house there. I I mean, I can't. It's it's a minute walk, two minutes walk.
Okay.
Yeah, I I have I have a comment. I am. I don't know if neighbors can do this, but I really don't oppose. I think this is a really fair ask. Um you know, they need space. And yeah, I get the bicycle thing, but there's four people, four bikes, four scooters, four, four, four. I really think it's a fair ask. As a neighbor, I I think it's it's fair to give it to them. That's it.
Great. Appreciate your comment. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you for everyone.
Any other comments from the audience? I see none, so we'll now close the public portion of this meeting. Board members, what do you have to say?
Well, I'll start off by saying that I certainly with respect to this garage addition, you know, whether or not you you wouldn't have this, you wouldn't have the the front, you know, the front yard setback issue. You know, were it not a corner lot here. So there's that. The um the building coverage issue. You know, it's not a small addition. It's definitely gonna be noticeable. It's definitely it's it's definitely substantial. On the other hand, you know, from a subjective perspective, I don't find it to be onerous or really sticking out in comparison to the buildings in the rest of the neighborhood. And I can certainly see the functionality of, you know, a third garage in a a house this size in that neighborhood is is not uncommon at all. So I can I can understand that request, and I don't think this is such an onerous. You know, in terms of for a flexible variance, I guess I would I would I think of in terms of a flexible variance. And I I could I could see supporting that.
Good, John.
Uh, I I I'm in agreement with what Wolfgang said, and coupled with that, given that the property is set far behind as Tim highlighted, that there's a lot of area in the front uh on both both sides of the front yard that they have given a corner lot. Uh, I think there is a there is room to create it, and there is enough room from the main from Long Hill Drive uh in terms of distance, the front yard setback. So so I could be supportive as well.
Thank you for the comment.
I could support this application as well for all of the reasons that have already been stated.
I too, you know, since it is a single story addition, I think it was two story behind the question, but since it's a single story addition, I think it's it's not too um, you know, assuming on the property. And uh, you know, obviously you do have the anomalies of quarter lot, even though this kind of doesn't apply, but a little bit. But I think because the massing, I you know, I could live with this uh this uh this addition. Do I have a motion in this case? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I I was just going to add, and I think I echo what everyone else said. I think especially when you're standing on the lot on the on the street and looking at the house, it's seems further back. So I I think it's okay as well.
Great. In that case, do I have a motion?
A move approval.
One second.
I could second.
Shandra, you're not voting.
Can someone else second for me?
Need somebody else to second it.
I'll second it.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Rick Plutner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Have a great night.
We read along calendar thirty nine oh one twenty two, F Zhang Y Quee fifty four, Hertzorn Drive, fifth short hills.
Hi, one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is it just you?
Yeah, do any professionals bring over?
Yes, I do. I should have Brian Adams.
Brian Adams, okay. Got him there twice. Is he your architect?
Uh, he so I don't know the 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 specific professional designation.
Okay.
He he, yeah, he's working for the company that's building the sunroom for me.
Got it.
Okay, Brian, um can you unmute and turn on your video? Brian, are you on?
You have a way to reach him outside of this. Like call him or text him?
Yeah, I say I see he uh turn on his video. Let me just pan.
I'll bring the other one over, maybe.
I tried that. I couldn't get it to go. But give it a shot. See if you can read over.
Yeah, I don't move.
Yeah, thank you. He, yeah, he probably one of the devices doesn't work well.
All right, he's gonna have to dial back in, so.
And what is his role in this? What is he? Brian?
Uh, so so they are the uh architect architect and designer for the for the sunroom?
He's the architect because I'm the only plans I have are from Lawrence Serangle.
It it sounds like he may be the contractor or
Yeah, he's Brian, uh, can you talk now? I see you are muted.
Right, so here's the deal. Um, since he is not able to speak, you have your choice to either move forward without him, or we will move to the next case. And then come back to you if he can sort out his technical issues.
Uh, what what do we do? I'm gonna try and figure it out. Thank you.
Okay, no problem at all. We'll we'll move on and then we'll come back to you. Move right on. Calendar thirty nine oh four twenty two, Jared and twenty eight Ray Hills Road, Short Hills.
Hello.
Okay, if if you about just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's proceeding to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
I do.
Your name's for the record, please.
Agneska Burke, A G N I E S H K B U R K.
I am Daniel Dubinette.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go first?
I would like to go first and um
All right, let's qualify you then again.
Thank you. Um so I am a licensed architect that primarily practice in our neighborhood. I've been licensed for twenty one years now. My license is in good standing and still in effect. And I presented before this board um often and other boards in Essex County and Union County.
License is good?
Yes.
Thanks so much. Your qualifications are accepted. Please proceed.
Okay, um our application tonight is requesting one variance. What we would like to do is add a bedroom to the second floor on top of the existing family room. So I'd like to share the screen and walk you through it. And uh, explain the case. Bedroom to the second floor on top of the existing family room. So I'd like to share the screen and walk you through it and, uh, explain the case.
Feel free.
Okay. Thank you. So this is obviously an existing house that sits on the property located in our four zone on Great Hills Road. It is an older development. I think this, um, this house was roughly built in nineteen twenties, late twenties. Um, it was probably part of a larger plot that was subdivided. So the existing house. Uh, it based on the R four zone has a lot of existing non-conformities and mostly, uh, the setbacks. Not building coverage, a lot of coverage and if they are, but mostly just on its existing orientation on the lot. And I think obviously that predates, uh, a lot of our zoning. So the, the application is to. Hey, hey, Dan. Rob, yeah, 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 I got you. Um, thank you. I'd like to mark this as exhibit A one. And it consists of two slides, uh, the architectural drawings with some color enhancement and photographs I took of the property today. And it's once, uh. File two slides.
Okay, you'll provide the tile lead, please. Thanks.
Okay. So this, this is a couple of drawings you have. But basically. The first floor. On the left side here.
Hey, hey, Dan, you're, you're, you're breaking up a little bit.
Okay, I hope it's not my connection. Let me talk a little closer to the microphone. Um, so on the left sides are existing first floor. We're not doing any work to the first floor except for we'll obviously have to add some. Structure to the ceiling of the family room and the proposal is to add a bedroom on top of the family bedroom and a bathroom. And so if I take you to the second floor. Currently, the house is a four bedroom, one bath on the second floor. And we would propose, uh, to have four bedrooms and now two bathrooms. So. They're small. The existing bedrooms are small. They sit over here and here and here and they share one hall bathroom. So the proposal is to build on top of the family room. And again, create a, a, a nice bedroom, bathroom and. Walk through one bedroom to get access and that'll become a closet. And the variance that's needed for this is because we're in our four, they require twenty two feet. Side yard setback for the second floor. And currently the house is around ten feet. Let me take you to the survey. Okay, so the dotted red line, uh, I indicate the property. You could see the existing house on the left. Existing non-conforming, it's, uh, odd location for the house and lot, but. Like I said, it is, we inherited this house. Um. The existing side yard setback on the left side, the small one is ten point three feet. And as it, you move back on the property. The house has a slight angle to it. So we, we, we open up to twelve point three feet in the back left corner. So twelve point three is, is the requested setback. And the requirement is twenty two and the yellow line indicates. The location of the twenty two foot side yard setback. And not that we need it, but I, I wanted to show you that on the first floor. The required setback is fifteen feet. So the house in its current condition is existing non-conforming. We're going to extend the side wall, not go more than. Uh, what exists today, but obviously we need a variance to make that happen. So that's the only, uh, uh, variance we, we seek. I believe it's a hardship based on the existing. Home on the lot. And one of the things to note, this is an R four zone. They require twenty thousand square feet. And the, and the lot is about fifteen thousand square feet. Not that I'm asking, but if we were in our five zone. We would meet the required twelve foot side yard setback. It'll have a second one. For the second floor, so we would not need a variance if we were, if, if, if we were located in our five. Um, but we are labeled R four. So hence, uh, the ask for the combined, uh, second floor setback. Just to give you a little, uh, background on the site condition, I measured. The home on the left being around thirty one point five feet away from our existing structure. There's a. Driveway that happens to be the driveway side for the house on the, on the left. I know my client spoke to the adjacent neighbor. Um, who gave our, gave their blessing, um, and, and had no issue with the extension. And I'll show you some photographs that depict.
Hey, Dan, before you, Dan, before you leave. This, um, survey or yes, plot plan.
Yes.
Um, where is the proposed balcony addition over the deck? And does that impact the relief you're seeking?
No, there's no variance associated with the deck. Because the farthest point will be the addition. Let me go to the floor plan. So yes, we'll have a balcony. Over the existing deck that comes off of.
Wait, we can't hear you.
Sorry. Yeah, I don't know if it's my, maybe it's my connection.
I, I think it's when you move back. You stay closer. No, I think if you stay close.
You're seeing my big head here. Um, yeah, so we set back the balcony from the corner lot, so. As far as I know, there's no variance associated with the balcony.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to show you some photos I took today. The accurate, we depicted site as it is. And it'll give us some context to, to our site condition. Uh, actually, before I get there, these are the front elevations. I apologize. There's three slides. To this one file. Um. Property and, and, and the orientation of the house. So. I don't even know if this is, this is the front of their home, but the, it's.
Wait, wait, I'm losing you.
Yes, I'm moving, I'm moving. Okay, so this is, is, I'm, I'm gonna call it the front elevation, even though this is not the elevation that faces Great Hills. Uh, but this is in my mind, the front of their home and this white grayed and airy is the. One of the. Nice things about the proposal.
Dan, we're losing you.
Oh, boy. Sorry. What do I do?
Why, why don't you lean in and choose your words carefully?
Okay.
We raise the antennas on the top of that thing.
So one of the nice things about this proposal is that. It's gonna balance out the architecture of the existing home. Uh, and you can see this is, this, this area is, is the proposed addition. We're going to match the roof lines. Uh, we were inspired by the existing dormer that exists on the left. On the right side and we're gonna have a balance. And the goal is that it looks like it was always there. So to give you some context, these are photographs that I took today. And the first photograph. Those are home in relation to the neighbor to the left. And you can see that tall chimney. Uh, that's where the family room is. So on top of that, that'll be our bedroom. Um, and that's the location of the proposed addition. On the right side, again, I call this the front elevation. And you can see the one-story family room that's going to receive our addition and the roof style, angle, shape is going to match. So it'll look seamless and look like it was always there. This photograph I took from across the street. And it shows the relationship, uh, to the neighbor's home and what's happening on the neighbor's side. So. No expectation that we would block anyone's light and airspace. No trees will come down as a result. Of this application. And I do believe that the hardship is the existing orientation of the house on the lot. And the zoning that relates to this undersized lot. So that's our application.
Okay, you can, can just continue sharing your screen if you could. All right, any questions for Danny? Any questions from the audience?
Okay, quick question, Danny. Um. Sorry, is, are you guys reconstructing the deck and that railing?
We have to rework the deck and the railing to accommodate the structure for the. Uh, balcony above, yes, but it'll, it will stay relatively the same size that it is.
That, that railing was a little, is a little wobbly.
Yeah, that's a, we, we, we'll be doing some work on the deck, right? Yeah.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
Somebody there.
No, it's nobody there. Um, any comments from the audience? Again, we'll be there. Um. Then I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Um, so, uh, board members, what's your thoughts on this?
This is a definitely an application that I consider. Um, I actually think it's going to improve the, um, the, the look of the existing house. Um, and I agree with Danny that it's going to just ma- make it, um. Architecturally, uh, just, just seem, you know, more, more in line with, with the way that the house should be a kind of. After see, after going to visit the house and then seeing the plans, it, it almost looks like the house is missing that, that section. So, um, I'd be happy to support it.
Thank you. Any other comment? I'd agree with Jessica's comments. I think this is sort of one of those things where you look at it and you say, you know what, that should have been there in the first place. Um, I think it's a, uh, nice use of architecture. It's, it's beautifully appointed and, um. It kind of finishes the hot house off. So I think it'd be, uh, a real value add to the property. Go ahead, Wolfgang.
Now, I was just gonna echo much of what, uh, Jessica had said is that it looked, you know, it looks, you know, you, when you, you're looking at the design and looking at the house. It, it looks like a natural, it, it, it looks very natural. It ac- it actually adds a great deal. Um. Architecturally and otherwise to the house and the, you know, the proposed, the ve- the variance that's requested is. Is so minimal compared to what it's adding. I could, I could certainly support this.
Thank you. Any other comment? Can I have a motion in this case then?
Move approval?
No second.
Thank you.
Who, who was that?
Uh, that was okay.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Rick Plutner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah.
All right, we will bring Shaquille back over, Mr. Adams, see if we can, uh, this whole thing to work.
Hi, everyone.
Hello again.
Hello again. Let's see.
It's Mr. Adams back.
I'm.
See, maybe he's on tour.
Yeah.
I figure someone's gonna get that. Someone's gotta get it.
It's wrong. It's the way wrong spelling, by the way.
Yeah.
Is there another Brian Adams that you can bring in?
Nope.
No, this is, this is all we got right now. Oh, boom.
There we go. Now we just need video. Yay.
There we are.
Hey, hey.
All right.
All right, if you're both, we just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to given tonight's proceeding to be the truth, whole truth, but the truth?
I do.
All right, your names for the record, one at a time now.
Uh, Yun Chan Chu.
Can you just, just spell that?
Sure. Uh, Y U N C H A N G, last name Q R U.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
Uh, yes, my name is Brian Adams, B R I A N A D A M S. Um, uh, my home address is in Florida. Uh, but my office address is eleven, uh, is New Jersey Sunrooms and Additions. Eleven ninety nine Route twenty two, uh, Mountainside, New Jersey, oh, seven, oh, nine, two.
Thank you very much. Uh, who would like to start?
Uh, I'll start, uh.
Wait, let me, let me just, let me just ask. So, Mr. Adams. Are you a, um, do you have any licensing as, as an architect?
Uh, no, no, I'm the technical director for New Jer- Jersey Sunrooms. Everything is under my direct, uh, the, the, the drawing. The manufacturing, um, I oversee everything, uh, uh, and that's right, but I'm, I'm not a, an architect by trade, no.
Okay, but, but you're the designer for the project. Is that fair to say?
I design everything and we have an architect who works in tandem with us. That oversees all the projects and, and signs off on them. But I, I'm responsible for the design, the manufacture. Um, if any engineering needs done, I get it done. Um, so. E- everything, you know, and I've been in America for thirty years now and I've done probably. Five thousand of these similar sort of sunrooms, uh, at a minimum, oh, yeah, over the thirty years. So that's all what we do, specialized sunrooms. Thank you.
Okay. So continue, Mr. Chris.
All right. Well, of his apologies for the false start. Um, uh, we're finally here. So thanks, everyone, uh, for your patience and your time. Uh, we're seeking approval to build a sunroom. Uh, in the back of our house, uh, the sunroom will be attached to the kitchen. Uh, on top of the small part of the existing deck, uh, on the south end. Uh, there are two primary reasons, uh, why we're building the sunroom. One, uh, first one is, uh, my oldest son, uh, is allergic to mosquito bites. Uh, so the sunroom. Uh, will allow him to, uh, enjoy fresh air, uh, in a kind of a partially screened. Um, you know, screen and partially open space during summer evenings. And secondly, uh, I have a severe vitamin D deficiency. So any, you know, uh, addition. Of sunlight in our house, uh, would, uh, certainly, uh, help a lot, um, based on doctors' recommendations. Um, in terms of the impact on neighbors, we have three, uh, houses next to ours. Uh, the one, uh, to the north i- is lower, uh, than ours, so they would not see much of the sunroom. Um, the one on our back, uh, they basically see our whole house. Uh, so this sunroom is gonna be, you know, be part of that. You know, the whole house view that you're gonna see anyways. Um, and the third neighbor is to the south of our house. And, uh, they have planted trees, uh, you know, uh, separating, uh, uh, you know, the two houses. There's a lot of privacy. So again, they won't see much of, uh. The new sunroom. Um, and, uh, there, there's a really, you know, also, uh, not much change. I don't think it, it blocks any of the sunlight either for any of these neighbors. Um, and, uh, that's it for me.
Okay, so. We need to get a little information on the variances that you are seeking. Okay, so you're looking for side yard setback and combined side yard setback. Okay.
Yep.
Um. Why don't you tell us a little bit about why you need those and, um. Any hardships or anything that could be attributed to the lot?
So, uh, the required setback is fifteen feet, um, and, um. You know, uh, with, with the sunroom, uh, I think the shortest distance to the south side of the property line is gonna be thirteen feet. Uh, so it'll be two feet, uh, two for sure. Um, and the reason for that, uh, is because the, the, the direction of the property, property line is not parallel to the side of the house. So as we built this sunroom on top of the deck, um, it does, does get closer, uh, to the property line, a little bit. Brian, uh, anything else to add?
Hello?
Yeah, anything else to ask? So I'll see. Yeah, the hardship is the orientation of the property line. Go ahead.
Okay, for me to speak now?
Yes.
Okay, can the board hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Que's explained it very, very well. The hardship is the, because the side yard is, doesn't run parallel. It tapers inwards. So that's why the, the need for that side yard and the combined side yard, those are the two variances. It's going on top of partially on top of the existing deck. There is no other place it could be moved over to, because adjacent to that, there's a sloping roof would hinder anything going anywhere near it. So it's, it's not like we could change the orientation or the positioning of it. So it can only go in that place. As far as the setbacks, I think that's as much as we can say. There's no other setbacks, no other setbacks or any other need for any other variances apart from the right side setback and the combined setback.
So, do you have? It's originally submitted. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rob. Go first.
No, you go first, all.
All right. So it was originally submitted. I don't know if you can see it on my screen here. With the, you know, the, the room was in the back here behind the deck. I think it was submitted an error, and we received a correction.
Correct. Yes.
Does your calculations change at all by moving this onto the deck? Because you're showing 13 feet way back here, and you're going to be all the way up here. Is that, is that different at all?
I, I, I'll answer that one minimally by in- inches, because the taper isn't that great over that shorter distance. It looks greater, but it's not. It's still 13. It may be, you know, slightly under that. But for, you know, 13 is, is a good size. It's not worth changing it to say that, oh, it's only, you know, four inches smaller. We, we'll stick with the 13, and it's way, way the required distance that we're asking for.
So, Mr. Que, if you could, how, how far would you say that the corner of this, of this new sunroom would be from your neighbor's house?
The corner, it'll be actually it'll be further from the existing corner of our house to the neighbor's house, because our neighbor's house is right kind of next to our house. So this sunroom actually is going away from neighbor's house. And they have a patio in the back.
That chain link fence yours or your neighbor's?
That, I'm not sure. It was there when we, yes, we're about it. But I, I believe it's our neighbors, because they have a pool. I, I believe that, that's probably why they had the chain link fence.
Rob, any questions?
I was going to ask whether he had any photos showing the roof line that was testified to as precluding any possibility of sliding the sunroom over toward the center of the property.
If you have a look at my plans on sheet A5, it clearly shows you the, the, the roof line next to it. Do, do, uh, do you have those drawings?
So are, are you talking about the Serangle architects drawings?
Yes, I am. Yes. And it's A dash five.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right. So if, if you, if you go toward the center of the property, you're gonna, you're gonna hit that overhang.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's quite a substantial projection, that overhang is. And we've left it short, shy of that a little bit, so that we don't hinder and cause any leaks or anything within the two projects. So as a clear fall in between it of any rain, you know, so it's not going to hinder that existing overhang.
Anything further, Mr. Adams?
No, I, I think that's it. I mean, Mr. Que's obviously explained that his needs for it and the hardship being the the side yard setback not being parallel and the fact that we can't move anywhere else. But, you know, it, it's, it's a very, very, obviously, I'm going to say that it's, it's not my company, the company of words. Well, they are one of the best sunrooms in the business. It's going to give them a lot of light within the room, as he's explained the need for that extra light. And they're very light, very pleasant looking. You know, they're, they're not some sort of like cheap put you up sort of lean-to thing. But that, the, the quality of the room is extremely good.
Any questions from board members for, you know, one of these individuals?
Actually, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Jessica.
For the part, I, I'm just curious, the part that's going over the deck, do you need to, like, excavate or anything underneath to put in footings, like to?
Yes. Obviously, the, the deck is already there. We're not building on top of that. We, we want to improve the structural side of that. So we're going to put some new post holes into the ground. We're not putting in full foundations, so it won't hinder the grading, won't alter the grading whatsoever. There are 14-inch round concrete sonotubes that are dug 36 inches deep into the ground. And they, and a beam sits on top of those on the, and there's a six-by-six post that sits on top of the concrete. And that's supported by the main beam that holds up the whole flooring of the room. So there's no, there won't be any change to, to the grading whatsoever.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Then I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, what are your thoughts?
I'll, I'll go. This seems to me like a, a, quite a reasonable request. And clearly, you can see that there is a hardship created by the shape of the lot in terms of the side yard and the combined side yard. So, you know, you're building over the existing deck. It's where the house is already. I, I, I don't have any issue with this one.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, it's, it's a unique solution. I haven't seen it before. It's a natural extension of the kitchen into a family room. It kind of brings the house up to a more, you know, modern design in that respect. Yeah, it's unique. It's, it's interesting. The deck, as you have seen, is huge. It runs across the totality of the back. So it's, yeah, it's efficient. It's, 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 I like it. It's, it's an interesting way to, to tackle the problem.
Any other thoughts?
I, I agree with all the comments made. I could be supportive of the application. I think it's interesting, unique, and fits in with the, the family's purpose.
Anything further? In that case, can I have a motion? A little approval? In a second.
I'll second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Tuzoros?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Rick Plutner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you, everyone.
I do. I'm sorry?
Could I just say one more thing before we, we close that part of it? I'd like to apologize for my stupidity with my other computer. I could hear all you guys and ladies, but I, I don't know what I was doing. So I'm on my phone now. So please accept my apologies for any delays.
No, no problem at all. Soon, soon we'll be all through this. So January will.
I'll give you concert tickets as well.
Thank you.
That was a nice apology, though, but. I was going to say, that was the nicest apology we've heard since the summer of 69, I think. That's all I got to say.
Well, in that case, is there any other comments from the audience regarding anything that was not on the agenda this evening? I see none. So in that case, can I have a motion?
Oh, the move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Enjoy your evening, folks.
Great.
19.